Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to the Board of Leon County Commissioners for our meeting of January 25th. We want to begin our meeting today with an invocation of Reverend Moon from St. John's Episcopal Church. Reverend Moon, if you would come forward. Commissioner Dozier, if you would give introduction formally, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You covered it. I will just add that Reverend Abby Moon is the interim rector at St. John's Episcopal, and thank you so much for joining us today. Truly appreciate it. So we can rise for the invitation?
Delighted to be here. Let us pray. Almighty God, may your grace cover each aspect of this meeting. We pray that all voices will be heard, and we will have a mindset of inclusivity. May this be a safe space for people to express their opinions, and a place where ideas matter more than titles. May everyone be engaged and involved, and may all concerns be addressed. May each member of this gathering feel valued, and may we each recognize the skillsets and knowledge that each person brings to the table. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. And finally, teach our people to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens, that they may elect trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, that we may serve you faithfully in our generation and honor your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, representative republic, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor, for those words of prayer and invocation. We appreciate that. We are so excited today, a warm gathering of citizens representing excellence in every measure. And this afternoon, it's my desire that we would recognize those persons whom the Board has previously designated for awards and presentations. I'd like to recognize and note that there's a huge winner in the presence of the building today, but there's also history here today, and I want to take out of order and recognize a piece of history. And I'm going to call on Commissioner Welch to go first, and by a proclamation from Commissioner Maddox for the Timothy Furley, and then the Honor Flight, and then to the big-bigs who are in the building. There's so much history that I thought that if we do it in this style and order, it would afford many young people here today the chance to appreciate a lot of the wonderful essences of Tallahassee and Leon County. Okay, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the great privilege today of presenting a proclamation to the Bradley family, Ms. Parker. If you guys would come on up. As y'all know, I represent District Four in Leon County, and as I was telling Ms. Parker and her husband and daughter earlier, you know, there's no more substantial landmark in my district than the Bradley's Country Store. And this year, they celebrated their 50th Annual Old Fashioned Fun Day, which, if you're not familiar with it, is an incredible day of crafts and vendors, and I mean, you want to see a line of traffic down Centerville Road. Come out the Saturday before Thanksgiving here in Leon County, and you will see a line of traffic. And it's such a wonderful time of year, that Saturday before Thanksgiving, everybody's in a good mood, and it's just a really wonderful time. So if you want a cool atmosphere, you need to come out to the Old Fashioned Fun Day. So I've got a proclamation I'm going to read now in recognition of that. Whereas, we are commemorating the celebration of the 50th Annual Bradley's Country Store Old Fashioned Fun Day, celebrated each year on the Saturday before Thanksgiving, beginning in 1970. And whereas each year, people are invited to participate in activities including cane grinding, syrup making, old-fashioned wagon rides, and enjoy many traditional Southern foods and crafts. And whereas, the store's history stretches back to 1910, when Mary R. Benton, wife of John Rumel Bradley, would sell sausage from her kitchen window. And whereas, in the mid-1920s, Lawrence Edward Bradley, son of Mary R. Benton and John Rumel Bradley, installed a grist mill to grind corn into meal and grits, constructing the existing building in the late 1920s. And whereas, in 1960, Frank Benton Bradley, son of Lawrence Edward Bradley Sr. and Edith Harris Bradley, would take over operations, adding the now-famous Meat Market to the store, completing its construction in 1970. And whereas, in 1970, the Bradley's Country Store Old Fashioned Fun Day would be created, growing more each year to an event that draws nearly 15,000 attendees annually from the surrounding area and from throughout the country. And whereas, in April of 1984, Bradley's Country Store was officially inducted into the National Register of Historic Places in recognition of its influence in Miccosukee, Tallahassee, Leon County, and the region. And whereas, on the 20th day of November 2021, Bradley's Country Store was able to celebrate their 50th Annual Old Fashioned Fun Day and bring the community together for good food and good times once again. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that today we honor and commemorate Bradley's Country Store's 50th Annual Old Fashioned Fun Day and the Bradley family for continuing the tradition that so many in our community love and cherish. The Board further wants to wish success for many Old Fashioned Fun Days to come in the future, and thank Bradley's Country Store for embracing Leon County, Florida as its home dated this 25th day of January 2022. Y'all, please give them a round of applause. Thank you all. Once again, please say anything?
Thank you so much for this proclamation and for the recognition of our little business that has grown through the century here in Leon County. I would like to dedicate this to the loving memory of my parents, Frank and Lily and Bradley, who started this, and we would not be here today were it not for them. Thank you.
I need to tell the Bradley family that I'm a little guilty of eating some of their sausages, Vince. And Vince, I don't know if you look a little guilty of eating some of their sausages, too? It's excellent. And we commend and congratulate you all for more than 112 years, and we wanted the FSU girls soccer team to know what a continuing legacy is and how hard you all, your family... Just give them another hand, please. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. We move further now into our meeting, and we're asked now if Commissioner Maddox will come. Let's Furley come up, please. So I'm in Sam's, getting my protein shakes, and I'm trying to get in shape. It's January, everybody should be doing the same thing here. And a gentleman walks up to me by the name of Rick Cotton. Rick is an old friend of mine, and he's watching today. He says to me, he says, "Did you hear about those young men who saved a young lady in December?" And I said, "Well, no, I didn't." He said, "You know, in this day where we hear so much negativity when it comes to our black males, it'd be a great opportunity for us to recognize a hero or four heroes within our community." And I said, "You know what? You are absolutely right." So I want to take this opportunity to thank Rick for taking the opportunity to stop me, to let me know about the great thing that this young man and the other people with him had done that day in saving a life. I can say but for Rick having that conversation with me, we wouldn't be standing here today recognizing a hero here in Leon County that saved a life, a life of someone that didn't look like him, a life of someone who deserved to be saved. So before I even get into reading the proclamation for Ms. Furley and these two other bystanders, I want to shake your hand and tell you, you are a community hero, and we appreciate you. Whereas, on December 8th, 2021, a car driving down Jackson Bluff Road veered off the road into a ravine below. And whereas Timothy Furley and two other bystanders witnessed this accident. And whereas, it takes exceptional valor and selflessness to come to another's aid in the face of potential personal injury. And whereas Timothy Furley and two other bystanders rushed to the site of the accident. And whereas, at the risk of personal injury, the three men worked together to safely remove the driver of the vehicle from the site of the crash while paramedics advanced to the site. And whereas, through the swift and instinctive action of Timothy Furley and his companions, the driver of the vehicle suffered no serious injury. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners here in Leon County that Timothy Furley and the two other individuals who came to assist him be recognized for their courage and heroism in rescuing a fellow citizen from certain danger. This is signed by myself, the chairman attests to by the county administrator. If we could, please, give this man a standing round of applause, please. Last thing I'll say, if, Mr. Chair, if you've got people up there that want to speak, we, like I said, we heard a sheriff, a report from the sheriff... How old are you?
Thirty-four.
We heard a report from the sheriff that said that age range of our most violent criminals was about, I think, about 15 to about 30 or so, 35? This young man is 34, and I believe the other folks were about the same age. And they're out here saving lives. So whatever stereotypical look you may think a hero looks like, I want you to know a hero looks like this young man right here, and I'm proud to stand next to him. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good, very good.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Byer, I don't want to do the Honor God, the Honor Flight. Let's recognize them, and we'll save... Because there's going to be a lot of commotion with the photo op and all of that stuff. Honor Flight, we welcome you now, Ms. Napier, Ms. Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Administrator. We're very proud to be here. Anyone that doesn't know, I think you all know me, Matt Kemp, Chairman of Honor Flight Tallahassee, and everybody definitely knows this guy here, Tom Napier, Vice Chairman of Honor Flight Tallahassee. We're here today to thank all of you, for all Commissioners, for your support, and for all of the Leon County employees that have helped us over the many years that we've been doing Honor Flight. It is our 10th anniversary. It's hard for us to believe that. We have flown 560 veterans to Washington, D.C. to see the memorials that were built for them. Our Leon County was the first entity to support Honor Flight when we began 10 years ago, and we sincerely appreciate all of your support and everything that you've done for us, because it directly translates to helping veterans and our community, and helping them feel appreciated and honored. Our mission is to send World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam veterans, especially World War II, tell us that in over 75 years, except for family members and friends, no one, no one, has ever thanked them for their service and their sacrifice. And they are so moved on the day that we take them to Washington, D.C. And I've heard hundreds of times, literally, and I always caution the veterans, you know, you might be careful around your wife saying this, but they say the day we take them to Washington, D.C. is the best day of their entire life. So it's been an amazing thing for us, that these veterans, we need to honor them for what they've done for the United States government and for the American people. And as many of you know, some of you have gone on the flight, some of you will be going on the flight soon, and many of you have come to our Heroes Welcome at the end of the evening at 9:40 at night when we return back to the flight line hangar. And it's an amazing experience to see these veterans, and remember, this isn't a AAA trip. These are veterans between 70 and 100 years old. We've got two guys from World War II signed up right now. One is 99, and one is 98 for this next flight in April. So these aren't young people, these are experienced people, and they really appreciate this. So our mission primarily is to take flights, but we do a lot more for the veterans all year long for these past 10 years. We help them, we go on events with them, and we have literally, through this program, have changed the lives of veterans. And so at least if nothing else, on April 23rd, 9:40 at night, if each of you would come out and experience what it's like to see some heroes come home from an amazing trip to honor them on that day. So what I want to do last is just to read a very short excerpt of a letter that we received from Captain Roger P. Murray. He was a United States Navy veteran from the Vietnam era, and he wrote this on Memorial Day of 2018. Dear Mr. Kemp, it is fitting that on this Memorial Day that I write to express my heartfelt thanks to you and your Board of Directors and the many volunteers who made the May 19th Honor Flight possible. One incident tells the meaning your efforts can have on veterans. I was approached by a woman in the BWI Airport. She asked me if I was a veteran of Vietnam. I told her that I was, and she took my hand and said, "Welcome home." Other than family and friends, no one had ever said those words in my Vietnam experience. Her words melted the feelings I had been holding since the anger demonstrated at our return. We may never know who she is, but God bless her and God bless you all for making my welcome home possible. Your support of Honor Flight Tallahassee has made this welcome home possible. We thank you.
I'd like to encourage all County Commissioners, please go with us. I see everybody up there, some of them have not gone. Only one that's gone is Commissioner Rick Myers, gone with us twice. He got a habit of it, but I just want to tell you what, particularly what Matt does as my Vice Chairman, he puts me in charge of logistics. What does that mean? That means you get the plane off and get the plane back, plus I got to keep track of 168 people on that airplane. Not only on the airplane, but when we get there, we go to nine memorials. We get off the buses, on the buses, on the buses, back and forth. And Matt tells me, he says, "We got to schedule, and we got to have police escort to make sure that we get back in time." Have you ever counted 168 people in three buses each time? That's my job, and you know somebody ain't lost one yet. But anyway, I'd like to call Commissioner, Chairman, Bill Proctor. Would you, can I get you bring to here, am I bringing up to you, or? I present to County Commissioners a plaque of presenting for what they present, which y'all have done for us. You've done an awful lot for every year, and I want to thank you for every one of you. Bill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Proctor.
Thank you all. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we certainly appreciate, though in no way we anticipated any kind of reflection like this, but for you to know that my father's a veteran, and many members of our families are veterans. So our support for what you do is genuinely from the depth of our own hearts, and we really feel that the honor is to you. Anytime you afford a veteran the opportunity in the years of 70 to 100 years young, that chance to go and reconnect with a piece of their soul, and that we support that coming together, that men and women may find rest, find tranquility, and just a sense of peace with many things that haunt them once they have left the fields of battle. So to you, we say, thank you. We accept this, but most of all, no, we thank you all. God bless you. Thank you. Yes, thank you all. Commissioners, it occurs to me that I'm designated to do the next honor, but it occurs to me more so that we have a national champion on our desk. And I'm going to ask the Vice Chairman, former running back for the Florida State Seminoles, 2001 National Football Championship, that a national championship be available to present to the national champion, and I'm going to defer because it's in his blood, he's a national champion.
All right. Seven, seven. Weird part is, all of them thought they were talking about each Commissioner, like, "I thought they were talking about me." This is a special moment because I get to present a proclamation, again, as Commissioner Proctor said, to a national champion, from a national champion who knows how hard you had to work to become a national champion. For those of you who have played sports, you can, at any level, you know the triumph of winning a championship at any level. But boy, when you do it at the collegiate or professional level, you take that times 10. When you think about the offseason workouts, when you think about the running you had to do, and all the things you had to go through to get there, the blood, sweat, and tears you had to do or you had to go through to get there, it makes it that much sweeter. And for the place that you call home to recognize you in this moment means that they appreciate you. So to each of our other Commissioners, on behalf of these national champions, and I'm sure I'm going to tell you later, thank you. Thank you for having the thought to recognize these young women and their coach. They even bought the trophy, look at that. Man, that's nice. For their triumph. You guys come on up. Everybody, everybody.
Mr. Vice Chairman, as you're reading, Commissioner Jackson, I got on the elevator, and Rachel was on the elevator, and we knew that, we could see the writing, and had a, there's a huge trophy somewhere, a national championship trophy, okay? And most of the times when I see these young ladies in the newspaper, you know, as a former athlete, they're always like, "Oh, flexing," and they look hard and mean, and, I mean, like, they're really into a moment about to... And they look so calm and peaceful, girl scout-like. And your calm faces just didn't look like those competitive faces when you're in the newspaper. So I didn't recognize anybody, but you definitely have some great photos in the newspaper that I've seen. Then to see you totally out of game face, it's like overwhelming.
Mr. Chair, the moral of that is just don't get on the soccer field with them. You be just...
I won't.
Proclamation reads, whereas 2021 Florida State Women's Soccer Team won a 2021 National NCAA Championship on December 6th, 2021, against BYU and Santa Clara, California. The win marked Florida State's third soccer national title in program history. And whereas, the Seminoles went 22, 1, and 2 on the year and won their eighth ACC Championship in school history on November 7th, 2021, with a win over number-one-ranked Virginia. And if Angelo Crowell is watching out there, I'm socking it to you right there, he's a football player I played against, went to Virginia, he'll get that. And I had to take that moment, I'm sorry, guys. Whereas, Florida State shut out 14 of its 25 opponents during the 2021 season, including five of the six opponents during the NCAA tournament. Let me read that again. Whereas, with all, I'm sorry, whereas Florida State shut out, that means zero points, 14 of its 25 opponents. I don't think we've had a Florida State football team defense that was that good in a long, long time. During the 2021 season, including five of the six opponents during the NCAA tournament. And whereas, with all the Seminoles' success this season, Jalen Howell, Emily, I might butcher these names, don't kill me, Emily Madrell, ooh, that one right there. Yulie? Yuzi, there we go, there we go. Yuzi, ooh, last name? No, they knew it. Were all named All-Americans. And whereas, that's why you gave me this proclamation, because of those names, Mr. Chair, you think you slayed...
You didn't have to tell it.
Yeah, uh-huh. Whereas Gabby Carl was named an Academic All-American and earned the Elite 90 Award for the second time in her career for having the highest GPA at the College Cup. Raise your hand, Gabby. Oh, she's not here? Probably in class. She is the only player to win the award twice for the sport of women's soccer. And whereas, Jalen Howell capped off her career at Florida State, becoming the sixth player to ever win the Mac Herman Trophy in back-to-back seasons. Howell also earned the Honda Award as the best player in collegiate soccer. Howell was drafted second overall in the NWSL draft to the racing Louisiana, I'm sorry, Louisville FC.
Soccer club?
That's probably on the field somewhere. Whereas, and whereas, the Florida State Women's Soccer Team is the national champion once again. However, the Lady Seminoles are a true example of excellence in intercollegiate athletics because of their academic achievement, character, maturity, and a sense of fair play. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners that we do honor FSU Women's Soccer Team National Championship. This is dated today, the 25th. Signed by myself, as well as the Chair, and attested to by the County Administrator. Congratulations.
Let's stand and give them a hand.
He said if anybody would like a picture group, would be happy to. I said, "Oh, no, 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 we're going to take a picture." Yeah, we're going to take a picture, that's part of the deal, you get a proclamation, you got to take a picture.
All right, we'll take a picture. Well, first, let me thank all of you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Mark Recorion, I'm the head coach of the team. Obviously...
Obviously, to have the success that we've had, it takes a, takes a big group, starting at the top. And we appreciate all of the support that we have here in Tallahassee, far beyond simply the university's support. If you have had a chance to come out, watch the team play, you see fantastic crowds. We have a true home field advantage. We're also blessed with a fantastic staff, some of which are here, and of course, fantastic players. So from my point of view, I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to be here, to be recognized again. It doesn't get old for us, I can tell you that. It's quite, quite nice to be back here and see some familiar faces. What I'd also like, if it's possible, is to ask one of our players. We have Jenna Nyswonger here that I've asked to say a few words and, like us coaches do. Didn't give her a whole lot of preparation, so we'll make it a little bit hard for her.
Firstly, I would just like to thank you guys on behalf of the whole team for having us here today and giving us the opportunity to learn about the history and heroism that is happening in the city that we live in. So thank you. To win a national championship, we were all just so overjoyed, especially with the adversity we faced last year, losing in the national championship final in May, to come back in December and win it all, I think is just a true testament to how special this team really is. The coaches, the staff, the players put a countless amount of hours committing to the team to win, but none of this would be possible without the fans and the people of Tallahassee that cheer us on. So thank you to everyone. Going forward, we're really excited for the team we have and we hope to see you guys next year with another trophy. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead. Kinda lead them. Go ahead. Okay, now, before you guys leave, other commissioners wanted to weigh in and to make comments to you. Jackson, did you play soccer? You good? All right, everybody, right here. On count three, one.
Now, Timbo. All right. Now, my Timbo.
One more? One more? One, two.
Well, Timbo. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Ladies, you all are very attractive ladies outside of your competition faces. And we want you to know that we're looking forward. In fact, we've got this designated for this time next year, the exact same presentation. That's a beautiful trophy. This time we want for Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Welch, and then Commissioner Dozier to lend the word. And Commissioner Minor and Cummings are also telephonically engaged with us this afternoon. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I think Coach Kay did a great job of congratulating the staff and the players. But I think that we all know that wins or losses start with the head guy. So congratulations to you, Coach, because the hundreds and thousands of hours that you put in to make these girls competitive, not only competitive, but in many cases dominant. Super proud that you represent Leon County, Tallahassee, Florida State University. We have the finalist, Janelle Howell, finalist for the Women's Athlete of the Year for the NCAA, which is a pretty prestigious honor. When did they announce that? Do you have any idea? I don't either. But couldn't be prouder of you. Academic achievements, I heard him talk about, one of our players had been for the second year in a row, the highest academic achievement for the ACC. Is that correct? Congratulations to all of you. I just want to leave with one question. How do I get one of those jackets without actually having, I don't know if they come in like big man size, but if whatever I gotta do, just let me make the check out, extra large, and I'll stop by and pick it up. Thanks, guys, for coming out and representing Tallahassee and Leon County so well.
All right, Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I walked around and said congratulations to you, to all earlier, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I would be willing to bet, Coach Krikorian, you probably have one of the highest team GPAs in the athletic department. So not only are these extremely skilled athletes, these are all top-notch students. But my wife works at the FSU Autism Institute, and I don't know how many people know that the soccer team hosts a Kicking It For Autism event every year, which is just incredible. All right, for young people, they get to go out on the field and play soccer and go through drills with the, with the team, with Coach Krikorian, who's a huge supporter. And so soccer is a unique sport because, you know, we have college athletes all in Tallahassee from all parts of the country, but, but college soccer, I mean, some of you are from all over the world. All right? And you come into Tallahassee and, I mean, you talk about the best athletes in the world, the best students in the world, some of the best people in the world coming here into Tallahassee and making Leon County your home, if not forever, but for a little while. And, and so I think that is a unique thing that we need to recognize, that you all really are the best of us, not just as, as Tallahasians, but as, you know, global citizens. So I just wanted to reiterate my thanks to everybody, let you know how proud we are of you. You know, the whole community, you really represent us incredibly well. And a lot of you are gonna go on to be captains of industry, political leaders in your own communities. If you stay in Tallahassee, I'd love to see some of you sitting up here someday. Your work ethic and your determination to succeed is really inspirational to everybody. All right, young, old, man, woman, everybody. So I want you to really embrace what an inspiration you've been to our community. So thank you so much.
Right, you guys didn't know you were gonna get a lecture from a school teacher today, did you? Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We got a school teacher and a principal up here, so you can get a lot, but it's good. Congratulations to everyone. Coach, it's good to see you again. Hope you'll keep coming back year in, year out. To you and your team, your staff, congratulations. But I know these women are the powerhouse, right? They're the heart and soul. You're the ones who got the job done again, which is fantastic. Thank you for being here today. We know you got a lot on your plate, it's the middle of the semester, everything else is going on. But coming out, it really does, it's not just, you know, something that we love to have fun with and kind of fight over who gets to read the proclamation, right? But the proclamations are the way we signal something really significant to our community. And this is exactly what your accomplishment represents. As I thought about this, my mind went in two directions. On one hand, I got nieces and nephews and friends' kids who are playing soccer all the time. And as you're starting to win, you're going on towards the championship, you're giving so much confidence, so much power, not just to the young girls, but also the young boys. My nephew is excited as anything when, you know, he sees you going up and getting towards the national championship. That is really significant. You're encouraging others. On the other side, though, I do want to recognize, I think it's important, we are in the 50th year anniversary of Title IX, and women's sports are significant and it is a powerhouse. And sometimes we don't see the crowds, we don't see the impact that maybe some other sports have, but you all are out there every day getting the job done, and it means a tremendous amount to our community and to everyone who's watching and cheering you on. So thank you very much and good luck. We'll see you next year.
Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to everybody, Coach, team. You know, I don't want to reiterate everything that my colleagues have already said, but not only is this a, just a tremendous source of pride for everyone here in the community, but for those of us who have young daughters, I've got an eight-year-old daughter, and this is the kind of thing that really opens her eyes to possibilities. To have your team make the national championship is the kind of thing I have so much pride in telling her because it shows, it just broadens her horizons on what is possible. And so, yes, we're all incredibly proud of you. The example that you show our young people that are younger than you is very valuable too. So we're very grateful for that as well. Congratulations to everybody, and we'll see you here next year.
Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't want to miss this opportunity to congratulate FSU for a job well done. I know your great accomplishment on the national level is the result of excellent coaching, talented and excellent players. So we are so very proud of you. FSU is a great partner in this community, and so we look forward to congratulating you all again this time next year. Thank you very much. Keep up the hard work.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Certainly, with this championship, it places my mind in the thought of another collegiate team, great team, called the University of Connecticut, and I believe they're the Huskies, the basketball team. We have a great coach who's committed, who's stabled, and year after year, produces the level of competitiveness. It says a lot for the coaching element. Certainly, when you begin multiple national championships, I think Connecticut is the hallmark of girls collegiate excellence. But you're making a huge statement, as pointed out by Commissioner Dozier, in what it represents to other young ladies younger than you. Didn't know that this was the 50th year of Title IX, but it was in place that a moment such as this could be experienced by you. We thank you for how you represent Leon County, the city of Tallahassee, Florida State, which is a great national university, and its excellence is exalted and well-known. And you have only embellished upon what everyone already knows, that at FSU, we got it going on. We thank you, God bless you, and winning is a transferable, can be a transferable quality and experience. What you do on the field, you take it with you to other avenues of life. For the final word, a national champion shuts us down. Mr. National Champion, our vice chair.
You can call me a national champion one more time.
National champion.
Yeah. So the only thing I wanted to add was just, you know, I remember 1998, we lost the national championship to Tennessee, similar to you guys losing the year before, and then we end up winning the next year, Virginia Tech. The following year, we went and played Oklahoma and lost that championship. I can, I can trace that loss back to a loss of cohesiveness amongst the team and the coaching staff. At the time, we had one of the best teams we ever had. Chris Winkler was our quarterback, had about five receivers that was in the NFL that year. Got down to the last game, we lost our number one receiver, and we lost our offensive coordinator to Georgia. We lost that game 13-2. I say all that to say that the person who's sitting next to you, if you want to win a national championship next year, is your best friend. And the person sitting behind you is your best friend. Those are the people that you really need to get to know over this time if you hope to achieve the same kind of success this year that you had last year. Trust your coaches, but stay tight as a team, and I promise you, with the talent that you have, you'll be right back here next year. But if just one of you decides that you want to go outside the tight-knit closeness that you have now and create friction or be that cancel within the team, you won't make it. You won't make it. Listen to your coaches, like I said, but most of all, make sure you all stay tight. Make sure you all stay together and you rely on each other, on and off the soccer field. Congratulations, hope to see you again next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we transition now to the business that's before us. County Attorney, would you advise us our steps with respect to admitting Commissioners Minor and Cummings into our meeting with voting privilege?
Thank you, Chairman Proctor. There is the coronavirus COVID-19 update, still under awards and presentations. However, it is appropriate for the board, under its policy 1-5, to take a vote to authorize Commissioners Minor and Cummings to attend and participate virtually.
We have a motion and a second that we admit Commissioners Minor and Cummings into our meeting. It's voting privilege, hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. It passes unanimously. Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Cummings, we certainly will be acknowledging your votes. So please know that you're, you're on, you're part of this meeting, you're very official. So with that being said, our last presentation will be that of coronavirus disease update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as far as your standing COVID update goes, I've got just a few updates for you today. First, as you know from your previous updates, new COVID-19 cases have surged nationwide and globally in recent weeks as a result of the highly transmissible Omicron variant. And while hospitalizations have seen an increase in COVID-19 patients recently, the number of new cases is beginning to level off and adequate hospital resources are available to meet demand. Early research, Commissioners, of course, as you know, indicates that vaccinated people, especially those who have received boosters, have more protection against severe illness. And as a result, our community media relations team continues working heavily to promote COVID-19 vaccinations as well as our testing sites. We have met the increased local demand for testing, something that we discussed at our last meeting, resulting from Omicron through coordination with the county health department and other partners. As you may recall from your recent email updates, we continue to coordinate pop-up testing sites. Last week, FDH, in partnership with TMH, opened a walk-up testing site at the Gazvini Center, which is also open seven days a week. Finally, Commissioners, the federal government has launched an effort to provide free rapid tests to every household. Citizens can sign up to receive free tests at www.covidtest.gov, which will be shipped directly to their homes. And of course, we're promoting that as a resource as well. With that, Commissioners, I'm very happy to answer any questions. Also, at this time, I'd like to hand it off or introduce you all to Charmaine Anderson. She's with our county health department for today's update.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for having me. For our COVID-19 update as of January 25th, 2022, according to our latest state report over the last week, this is looking from January 14th to January 20th, we have seen a total of 5,404 cases here in Leon County, resulting in a positivity rate of 22.8%. Our cumulative case count is now at 73,298 cases, bringing our cumulative case positivity to 27.7%. And if you will look at the graph ahead of you, you will see that we have been in our largest surge to date, but we are currently coming down from that and decreasing in cases. In terms of vaccinations, we are at 61% of our Leon population being vaccinated, with 587 people having been vaccinated over the last week. In terms of testing, testing is available at the following locations. We have our DOH Leon Administration Building located at 2965 Municipal Way. This testing site is run by Nomi Health Labs, and it runs from seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The same goes for Huntington Oaks slash Lake Jackson Library location, located at 3840 North Monroe Street. It is run by Nomi Health Labs as well. And then the newest testing site run by Nomi Health Labs in partnership with TMH is at the Gazvini Center, located in the rear parking lot, and it once again runs seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Then we also still have the FAMU testing site location, as well as primary care providers and CVS and Walgreens. Once again, in terms of vaccinations, we are at 61% of our Leon population being vaccinated over the last week. Our current variant of concern, as you all know, on November 30th, the United States designated Omicron as the newest variant of concern. Omicron as the newest variant of concern, and on December 1 of 2021, the first confirmed U.S. case of Omicron was identified. Additional details concerning this variant, according to the CDC, it was first identified in South Africa. In terms of spread and transmission, it has been determined that it may spread more easily than other variants, including Delta. In terms of vaccine and its efficacy, breakthrough infections in people who are fully vaccinated are expected, but vaccines are effective at preventing severe illness, hospitalizations, and deaths. Early evidence suggests that fully vaccinated people who do become infected with Omicron can spread the virus to others. However, all FDA-approved or authorized vaccines are expected to be effective against severe illness, hospitalizations, and deaths once again. In terms of treatments, scientists are working to determine how well existing treatments for COVID-19 work. Based on the changed genetic makeup of Omicron, some treatments are still likely to remain effective, while others may be less effective. In terms of our CDC data for cases and deaths for Leon County, the table below shows the seven-day metrics for Leon County per the CDC County Tracker. As of yesterday, January 24, CDC had our cases for the seven-day period at 5,431, with our case rate per 100,000 individuals being at 1,849.91, with a 29.26% positivity rate. In terms of deaths, we have been marked at less than 10 deaths over the last week, and then percent of population of those five years of age or older who are fully vaccinated, they have us at 58.1%. And then in terms of new hospital admissions, we're at 169. In terms of recommendations for booster doses, CDC now recommends that everyone 12 years and older should get a booster dose. For Pfizer, everyone 12 years and older can get Pfizer. If you previously received Moderna, adults 18 years and older are recommended to get the booster dose for Moderna, and then for J&amp;J, adults 18 years and older are recommended to get a booster dose. It's important to note that for, if you previously received Johnson &amp; Johnson for your first series of vaccinations, the booster dose that is recommended is either Pfizer or Moderna. Also, as of January 4, 2022, the CDC did take down the timeframe in which someone would need to get a booster dose after receiving their first two-dose series. It has now changed from six months to five months. In terms of pediatric vaccine recommendations, CDC recommends that everyone ages five and older get a COVID-19 vaccine to help protect against COVID-19, and those between the ages of five and 11 can receive the Pfizer vaccine. CDC did update their isolation guidance for the general population. Now, if a case or individual has tested positive for COVID-19 or has symptoms, regardless of vaccination status, CDC says to stay home for five days and isolate from others in your home. If you had symptoms, you are able to end isolation after five full days. If you are fever-free for 24 hours, of course, without the use of fever-reducing medication, and your symptoms are improving. If you did not have symptoms at the time of your positive test, you can end isolation after at least five full days after your positive test. However, for both scenarios, cases should continue to wear a mask around others for an additional five days. In terms of quarantine guidance for the general population, CDC has updated it. So if you were exposed to COVID-19 and are up to date on your COVID-19 vaccinations, so that would include receiving your booster dose as well, you would not need to quarantine unless you develop symptoms. However, you are asked to wear a mask around others for 10 days and test on day five if possible. However, if at any time during that timeframe you begin to develop symptoms, it is recommended that you get a test and quarantine at home. If you were exposed to COVID-19 and are not up to date on your COVID-19 vaccinations, the recommendation is to quarantine at home for five days. After that, continue to wear a mask around others for an additional five days, and then once again, test on day five if possible. Once again, if at any point you develop symptoms, you should get a test and stay home. Then lastly, our public health mitigation strategies remain the same. First off, masks, according to CDC, you should wear a mask in indoor public places if, one, you are not fully vaccinated or not up to date on vaccines and are age two or older, or if you are up to date on your vaccines but are in an area of substantial or high transmission. And then next, social distancing inside your home, avoid close contact with people who are sick, and outside your home, put six feet of distance between yourself and people who don't live in your household. And then lastly, the golden standard of hand washing, wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially after you have been in a public place or blowing your nose, coughing, or sneezing. That is all I have for today. Thank you.
We thank you, Ms. Anderson. Commissioners, are there questions of Ms. Anderson this afternoon? Commissioner Dozier.
Quick question. Ms. Anderson, thank you again. It's good to see you, and I want to recognize this is our first meeting without Claudia Blackburn. We've seen the pictures up there of her retirement, so I hope you all know, you and your team, that every time we've said thanks to Ms. Blackburn, it is extended to the full department. So really appreciate your work for the last few years and beyond. So I just wanted to get your reflection on this. We've been reading a lot in the news, I'm sure a lot of people have, and I think it comes out in your numbers. We may not see as many people in the ICU or as many deaths, thankfully, this time around as we did with Delta, but we're still seeing a high number in the hospital. And it's, what I'm hearing is that the symptoms may not be as bad to get people into the ICU, but it's still a big demand on our healthcare system, on our nurses, our doctors, and the hospitals. Is that right, from what we're seeing in Tallahassee?
I can say, based on what we're seeing according to CDC numbers, it looks as though we are trending downward in terms of new hospitalizations. However, that could be staggered. Historically, we have an increase in cases, and then hospitalizations tend to increase later on, so it's not directly dependent.
That's helpful, and I guess it's still putting pressure on our hospital providers and all of our healthcare providers in the community. So it's still good for us to wear the masks and try to keep the numbers down, even if it's not escalating people to the ICU. That's kind of, it's still good for us to keep those numbers down, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for that. I just, it's something I'm hearing in the news, Mr. Chair, and I wanted to ask Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Very, very good. Any other Commissioners? Ms. Anderson, we thank you for such a thorough report. Excellent. Thank you for the good work that you all are doing, as Commissioner Dozier was pointing out, as you all readjust in the post-Claudia Blackburn era of our health department. We know it's going to be great. Continue to hold up the bloodstained banner and soldier on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, on yesterday, it was our privilege to enjoy our annual retreat. I wanted to, again, offer compliments. There's a sense of continuity from yesterday to today. Our meeting at the fairground was very impressive, as our staff, county attorney, senior members of staff, all presented to us reports on various divisions and departments of our county's government. We encouraged on yesterday our county administration to please, to please promulgate the findings of what you shared with us, that the public will know how well we have performed, and to know that overall, the independent rating of the Sax Communications Company found a 94% approval rating of Leon County's government. Between 3,000 and 4,000 citizens were surveyed and asked various questions. So to the extent that the comments which were adopted, that we reacted to some of the things which we took exception to, we want to say, Mr. County Administrator, thank you on a bang-up year. I wanted to just share with the public, we'd like for you, is it online, this report? This report is online. It's fabulous. We encourage your reading it, and we intend to herald its content in the coming days and weeks. Matt, we know you're going to do a fantastic job of distributing and making sure that our community is aware of what you have done and how well you've performed. Commissioners, thank you for your patience on yesterday, and we're going to push this boat off into the shore here and get started. Ms. County Administrator, we have items eight, nine, and 11 that have been pulled.
That is correct.
Are there any others?
Eight, nine, and 11, those are the ones that have been pulled.
Okay, Commissioners, as we set sail, we have eight, nine, and 11 that have been pulled. Is there a motion for the adoption of the remainder of our agenda? We have a motion, second, for approval of the remainder of the agenda. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, we adopt the items as presented as our agenda for the evening. Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, item number, items number eight and nine were pulled by Commissioner Minor. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Commissioner Minor, you have the floor for number eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And if it's the will of the chairman and the board, but I requested both items eight and nine to be, eight and nine to be pulled from the consent agenda for the same reason. My wife is an independent contractor with Hamilton Realty Advisors. She does not have contracts in the Rivers Landing or Tarragates Developments for which she would receive compensation. Thus, I do not believe a conflict exists. However, other realtors with Hamilton Realty Advisors do have pending contracts for properties in these developments. For this reason, I will recuse myself on items eight and nine, based on the appearance of conflicts pursuant to Section 286.012 Florida statutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. General Counsel, is that satisfactory with you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner's recusal, which Commissioner Minor has offered, sharing with us his reason, disclosing, giving complete transparency, I have no reason to object to what he has said. On item number eight, is there a motion that we go with staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chair, with the county attorney's advice, could I make a motion for option eight, or for item eight and item nine in one motion? Okay. So I'll make a motion for item nine and item eight. Thank you.
Is that okay to combine items?
You can. Options one, which is staff recommendation for agenda items eight and nine, yes. You can combine.
That was, thank you, ma'am county attorney. That was tripping me up. I was trying to go for options and not the items. It is option one for both eight and nine. Thank you.
Very, very good. That saves us 40 seconds, and I want to be true to the single member, single item issue that we're voting. Okay, very good. It passes. All in favor of the motion by Commissioner Dozier, please say aye. Polls the same sign, it passes unanimously, and we thank you. Commissioners, on item 11, the interlocal agreement for hurricane debris removal and disposal services. Mr. Administrator, if you give us just a quick overview, and I will share my concerns.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 11, Commissioners, is an interlocal agreement for hurricane debris removal and disposal services. In general, it represents our continuous efforts to find improvements after hurricanes, in this case, during the recovery phases related to debris removal. And certainly, if you read it, you saw how down in the nitty-gritty this one is in terms of identifying roles and responsibilities between the city and the county in terms of debris removal for the various jurisdictions. With that, however, we're very happy to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, I pulled this item for the fact that Administrator is very much right, very much he's right, in that it simply secures a mutual understanding of the city and the county to remove debris following a hurricane and similar items of nature. What I would like for us to be mindful and to assert is that we have not had a minority vendor as a part of the debris removal, to my knowledge, at all. And in the complicated science of picking sticks up, moss, leaves, I'm believing that there are those who have capacity, capability, and I'm asking if, on the county's end, that the MBE effort is extended, men who've picked up sticks and picked up break yards for many years, and I happen to believe that that capability exists. I know former Commissioner Maddox was influential in our securing a company from Mariana to come to Tallahassee to pick up our debris. There has to be companies in Tallahassee that can remove debris from Tallahassee. So my encouragement is, we have minority participation, there is diversity there, and the kind of diversity that we saw in FSU's soccer team is the kind that we should have in this contract. So that being said, I move the adoption of the item, staff recommendation. We have a motion, a second, hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We move now to general business. Mr. Administrator, please introduce our item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one speaker on non-agended items, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims.
Hear me go. Come on up here. Fall in. We here. My name is Stanley Sims. My wife let me lay my head at 1320 Avondale Way. We need to give her a round of applause for over 26 years of dealing with me. I am so deliciously proud to be here today, Commissioners. I was able to watch you per Zoom, not because of illegal injunction, but a matter of convenience. I want to tell you for this commission, I want to give this commission, for what you've done, a B+. I don't get frowned on the B+ because I think Bs are better than As. But I also want to acknowledge the MVP player for this district, for this county government, in my opinion, is our county attorney. Ma'am, I want to tell you, you have done a phenomenal job, and the way you have done this job, you play, you speak the law plain language. You don't show a preference to side with any of these Commissioners. You've taken direction from this commission, and you apply the law, and you made it so an individual like me could understand during some very challenging times. You are new to this, but you rose to the occasion, and I think that that was not mentioned enough, because the way you have done your job, you're not seeking any praise. But I think the way you have navigated this community and took some strong stance through that is worthy. I'm going home now, Ms. Kent Osteen, so I want you to record this and remember these words in case I need your help, in case Vince don't do what I want him to do. All right? Moments like these don't come often, but I could not let this pass without acknowledging a phenomenal job that you've done. My last little point that I want to say is, we've got a lot of work to do, and I look at Tallahassee holistically. There we go. But I want to thank you that you allow all us to engage into this process, even someone as controversial and non-traditional as I. But according to democracy, I have a voice, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. a voice and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to say my voice. It's chastity, you got me right, all right.
All right, well, we thank you very much, Mr. Sims, uh, is there another speaker?
That's it, I'm going home. Mr. Chairman, that's all, our speakers for speakers under non-agended items.
Okay, very good, uh, Commissioners, we move now to general business and we ask, um, if our county administrator with, uh, leaders in that direction, general business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this item seeks the board's consideration to schedule the first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance, uh, that addresses public health and safety issues, including issues related to homelessness for February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. The proposed ordinance, Commissioners, as you will recall, comes at your direction from, uh, your meeting back in December, um, a- as, uh, the agenda item discusses in detail, uh, the county has, uh, established longstanding partnerships with the city, with the Big Ben Continuum of Care, with many other agencies to expand the current capacity of our community's homelessness services system. Despite these efforts, uh, Commissioners, the county, uh, is experienced, um, uh, is experiencing, uh, with increased frequency, individuals engaging in activities that are, uh, addressed in the draft ordinance. Uh, this is an emerging issue i- in, in our community and, uh, it's not unique to Leon County. Uh, based on the experiences of other local governments throughout the country, uh, these activities, um, often intensify rapidly in communities if they are left unregulated and certainly we've been hearing more and more, uh, from the community, uh, related to, uh, these issues. As I mentioned, uh, to you, uh, when presenting the December agenda item, Commissioners, I want to reiterate that the approach, uh, reflected in the draft ordinance is not intended to criminalize persons based on their status, uh, such as being homeless. Uh, it is intended to ensure the quality of life for all people in our community, including those who may be experiencing homelessness. Uh, this agenda item before you, Commissioners, provides an extensive analysis of recent federal court cases, uh, surrounding these issues, which I know our county attorney, uh, will be very happy to speak to. The draft ordinance before you reflects a proactive, lawful, and multifaceted approach based on that analysis, which would provide adequate legal authority to regulate these activities. Finally, Commissioners, as you will recall at your December meeting, uh, the board authorized a funding request, uh, from the sheriff's office to deploy two homelessness outreach street team or host deputies. Uh, at that time, uh, the sheriff, uh, also requested that the board defer action on the development of the new ordinance based on concerns regarding the potential impact on inmate population at the ten, the detention facility. I will note that the sheriff's, uh, the sheriff continues to request that the board delay action on the ordinance at this time. Uh, the sheriff has requested, uh, the opportunity, uh, instead to provide the board with a report in six months after the host deputies, uh, have been deployed, um, to see, uh, uh, and to evaluate, uh, our progress in addressing the issues. Uh, at that time, uh, staff would prepare a status report on the effectiveness of the host deputies, again, should the board decide, uh, that that's what you like to do and to seek the board's direction on whether to continue consideration of the draft ordinance at that time. However, the item before you again reflects the board's previous direction, which was to prepare the ordinance, uh, and posture it for your consideration, uh, for enactment today. In summary, Commissioners, uh, the item before you recommends option one, which would repeal the county's existing ordinance, which prohibits the selling of items or panhandling in the roadway or, and on medians, uh, as the sheriff's office has suspend, has suspended its enforcement of this ordinance based on recent federal court rulings. In addition, the item, uh, seeks the board's direction whether to schedule a public hearing to consider the draft ordinance as presented in the item. Uh, under option two, the ordinance would apply countywide, except to the extent of any conflict with city ordinance and under chapter three, the ordinance would apply in the unincorporate, in the unincorporated area. Commissioners, with that, um, again, we're seeking your policy direction on this item and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have and that goes for, uh, our county attorney as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Administrator, Commissioners, I like-
I should say, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, seven, uh, speakers on this item.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, because I chair the Public Safety Coordinating Council, um, our responsibility, which you allow me to serve, uh, with the PSCC, which I chair, um, involves my interactions with the state attorney, the public, uh, defender, uh, the police chief, the sheriff, uh, court administrator, and other, uh, members of the judiciary, uh, Judge Akins, and other laypersons who are serving, uh, I want to, uh, ask that the vice chairman would, um, would, would chair this particular item and I would like, following those speakers, to, uh, weigh in, um, to share information, uh, and my thoughts coming from our Public Safety Coordinating Council, uh, which met last, last week and, um, and for that reason, I feel, um, um, I don't have a conflict, but I feel conflicted and wanted to chair and wanted to say something about the item. So, Mr. Vice Chair, would you please, um, handle this issue for us?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we'll start just speaking off, uh, do we have any speakers on the item, Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, seven speakers on this item, the first, uh, speaker joining us virtually, uh, Bonnie Greenblatt.
Thank you. How you doing? Name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes once you start. All right, like we have some difficulty here, I think we'll come back, next speaker and we'll come back to that one.
Let me just do a quick check, it might be hard to get her back, Ms. Greenblatt, are you on the line? Okay, moving Commissioners to the next speaker, Karen Woodall.
Ms. Woodall, how you doing? Thanks for coming out today, name and address for the record, please, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm Karen Woodall, my home address is five seven ninety Skoll Street, work six oh three North Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Um, appreciate the opportunity to be here today, I'm here to urge you to vote no on moving forward on the, um, ordinance to heed, um, Sheriff McNeil's request, to give him a chance to work through the process that you all funded last time. Um, I know it's been said that this is not an effort to criminalize homelessness, but it is criminalizing behaviors that occur because people are homeless. I hope that we can all work together on solutions to the real problems. We need to develop, uh, transitional housing, we need to have public restrooms, we need to have not just programs and services, but actual housing for those who are out there. And I think, I know this community, I know this commission, the city commission, I think we can all work together to come up with solutions that help our neighbors, our community, and the people who are experiencing homelessness, so I would encourage you to put the ordinance aside and, uh, let's work together on the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Administrator, next speaker.
Thank you, next speaker card I have is Stanley Sims, I'm not sure if Mr. Sims, Sims stayed around or not, okay, I believe he-
Next speaker.
-may not, following Mr. Sims, we've got Trish Brown, Trish Brown.
Is she on, is she virtual or is she in person?
She's here.
How are you, Ms. Brown?
How are you doing?
Very good to see you, uh, name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Good to see you too, uh, it's Trish Brown and my address is thirteen sixteen Levy Avenue.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I wanted to start out with, like, yeah, we should vote no on this, um, ordinance. To me, it is inhumane, to a lot of us, it's inhumane. This negatively impacts our already traumatized and poverty-impacted loved ones, families, friends, and neighbors. Forcing people into homeless shelters is not, not realizing or hearing or understanding the danger that the LGBTQ plus disabled seniors, our youth, our women and girls go through in those, um, facilities. Charging folks with fines where they are, where they sleep or lay, their head, their tired weary head is, um, is, is, is just wrong. Where are the people to go, um, to use the bathroom when no one else, um, will help or, uh, let them in? I say us because I was a homeless person once, um, I consider myself a homeless survivor. Instead of attacking our people with fines and penalties, I say we take more kinder, positive, and loving approach to our homeless crisis. Provide clean areas where our neighbors can set up tents and help manage and keep, you know, keep us safe. Give access to porta potty stations throughout the city, set up wash and sanitize stations, showers in places accessible. I witnessed the hurricane impact, the micro hurricane impact in the Gulf and thousands of people who were left homeless. When I asked what was needed, it was simply a shower and a place to use the bathroom, to feel human again. Instead of criminalizing our people for being poor, let's come together as a community and lift up our people and make our people feel human again. Let's provide housing for people and turn our focus on the real issues like affordable housing and healthcare for all and living wages right now and keeping politicians out of our classrooms. Let's fight poverty, not the poor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Administrator, next speaker.
Next speaker Samantha Vance.
Ms. Vance, name and address for the record, please, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Good evening, good to see you all. Uh, my name is Samantha Vance, address is twenty-six fifty Municipal Way. I'm here representing, uh, as a CEO of CESC, we are the parent organization for the Kearney Center and, uh, Health Services Center here in Leon County. Uh, we thought it was important to have a presence today as the face of the shelter for the county and, uh, simply inform you all of who we are and what we do, what services we offer. We provide shelter, medical, and dental services for individuals as the largest in the panhandle, serving eight counties. The Kearney Center's mission is to reduce homelessness by providing a safe environment that promotes dignity and respect for individuals in our community who are either experiencing homelessness or are at risk of homelessness. To fulfill our mission, we offer housing-focused programs and classes that aim to strengthen life skills that will increase the likelihood of our clients and will sustain stable housing and live, and help them to live healthy lifestyles. Currently, we house today, uh, two hundred and thirty individuals, uh, primarily men, a hundred and sixty men and seventy women, with the capacity to house up to two hundred and fifty-six and in the event of a natural disaster or cold night shelter, we can house up to three hundred and seventy-three. Our programs include housing-focused case management, diversion services that work to keep individuals from homelessness, mainly through bus tickets to family and friends, and rapid rehousing, a program that offers first month's rent and deposit through our partnerships with FSU, FAMU, and local agencies. We offer classes that include financial literacy, job readiness, credit repair, nutrition on a budget, and other classes that will focus on sustainability and that's something we just implemented this month, which, which was a launch of our enrichment center in the Kearney Center. The safety of staff and clients is our top priority. Last year, we served just under three thousand individuals and we housed just under five hundred people. We have continuously worked, uh, and diligently with the Florida Department of Health and, um, Claudia Blackburn was at the helm of that, helping us through the pandemic, uh, and we have provided a hundred and eighteen in-house vaccinations to our clients to date. Sixty-nine percent of our staff are fully vaccinated and seventy-eight percent of our clients are vaccinated. We believe that funding coordinated outreach teams, um, to access bill, and to build rapport and access to housing is what really helps, uh, with our homeless, uh, issues and, uh, many people who are unsheltered have developed a fear of the system, which can only be combated through developing a therapeutic relationship with outreach teams and we're working diligently with the Big Ben, uh, coalition, coalition on, um, the Big Ben COC on addressing some of those issues. That is who we are and thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the next speaker, Vicki Butler, to be followed by the final speaker, Renika Mulligan Ashcroft.
Ms. Butler?
Renika Mulligan Ashcroft.
How you doing? Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Renika Mulligan Ashcroft, my address is thirty-seven hundred Capital Circle Southeast. Um, I'm here today to say that we should vote no on the ordinance. Homelessness isn't, homelessness isn't a crime, it's an unfortunate situation that needs compassion, care, resources, and not punishment. The homeless population needs our help, our embrace, not rejection. If this community is farce people, then let's find a way to create opportunities and hope for our community members that are without. Creating an ordinance is harmful, more harmful than helpful. There are countless reasons why additional help is needed, for instance, each homeless, uh, person has their own unique situation and require different, um, different needs, so we should have alternative, uh, places that they can go. Um, funds for wellness resources and community and events to engage them and to, um, connect them with res- resources. Um, and renovation of empty buildings that are around, we can turn them into homeless, uh, transitional housing. Um, I know that there's a hotel that's on Capital Circle in Appalachia that they're remodeling and there's so many different buildings in Flor-, I mean, in Tallahassee that are empty and I think that we should invest in creating housing, um, for, for homeless. Um, I believe that empowering and embracing our homeless population should be the purpose behind any type of proposal ordinance and that we should lead with care and kindness and concern and not legatally. Thank you.
Thank you, any more speakers, Mr. Administrator?
That concludes the speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, before I get to our speakers, I think I have Commissioner Welch in queue to speak, any other Commissioners want to speak on this item? Commissioner Dozier, you want to speak as well? All right, uh, before we get to the speakers, I think I made my preference known last meeting, which was that we give the, uh, sheriff opportunity to, uh, do as, as he asks, not go full, full brim on this thing, uh, that we bring back a review on how things are going, uh, at a certain point and then talk about whether or not we should move in this direction. Uh, I think we, I think the sheriff deserves the opportunity that he's asked for on this, on this item. Um, I'll go with Commissioner Welch, followed by Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Welch, you have it.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Meyer, you go after Commissioner Jackson.
I'd like to add myself to the speakers queue, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I know this is a touchy subject and, you know, kind of a controversial issue and we've gotten some emails from folks and I want to acknowledge upfront that, um, everybody's intention here is, is righteous, I mean, we all are well-intended, we want to help our homeless population, specifically our chronically homeless population who insist on living outside. And so I feel like this ordinance is a thoughtful and reasonable approach to setting some guardrails, if you will, or a line in the sand for what we consider an acceptable quality of life. So, I think that whether you support the ordinance or you don't, I, I think all of our hearts are in the right place, number one, so I, I don't, I don't think supporting this ordinance means you're, you're cold-hearted or you're punishing poor people or that it's unconscionable or anything like that. I trust the county administrator and the county attorney to craft ordinances that are constitutional, that are reasonable and pragmatic, that serve the best interests of our community and I think this, uh, does that. This is not criminalizing homelessness, as the county administrator said, in my opinion, this is standardized- As the county administrator said, in my opinion, this is standardizing an acceptable quality of life. This is standardizing dignity. This is an effort to tell folks it's not healthy or safe for you to live on the streets, on public rights of way, on intersections or in medians. We want to encourage people to receive services. And the way that this is crafted accommodates that, and the idea being that if we don't have capacity to provide services, meaning housing, transitional housing, bed space, a roof over your head, food, clothing, shelter, the basic stuff, if we don't have that capacity, then no enforcement can happen with this ordinance. The sheriff's deputies who, I have tremendous respect for the sheriff and, and his wishes, and this ordinance gives the sheriff maximum discretion. There's no stepped enforcement, it's not, it's not, um, put in statute that you have three strikes or anything like that. It's completely at the discretion of our sheriffs, of our host deputies and our sheriffs. And by requiring capacity before any enforcement can happen, it's kind of encouraging us to build capacity, which we talked about yesterday as one of our big, bold goals for the next five years, is to increase our capacity by 100 beds, which is approximately half of what we consider the chronically homeless population. So what this is to me is it's saying to, to everyone in our community that we have a baseline standard of living in Leon County. When you, when you come to Leon County, we are going to love you enough to say you deserve a house, you deserve food and clothing and shelter. And if we come to you and you refuse those services, then what are we as a society or community supposed to do? Just throw our hands up and go, oh, well? To me, that is unconscionable. Letting someone live in the cold, in the rain, in danger, women, children, it is not dignified to use the restroom outside. If you don't have access to a restroom facility, you can't just go on the sidewalk. That is beneath a basic level of human dignity, and it is our responsibility as a society to facilitate people having what they need. When people panhandle in intersections, I heard this the other day, it is almost always going to be spent on drugs and alcohol, first, then food, third. So we're talking about the chronically homeless population who suffers from mental illness, which we acknowledge, who suffer from substance abuse addictions, which we acknowledge. When you give somebody $20 in an intersection, they're going to take that $20 and they're going to perpetuate their death by consuming alcohol and drugs. You are contributing to their demise. You're not helping people when you do that. And so this sets forth a very reasonable, in my sense, ordinance. The intent of this is clearly not to put people in jail. We recognize that the sheriff has a jail that is overpopulated. We are not trying to put our homeless people in jail. But what are we supposed to do when people say no? I sat in the lobby of this chamber last week and spoke for 30 minutes to a gentleman named Mike Pryor, who is clearly a homeless gentleman, who lives in the woods somewhere. And the pain in his eyes broke my heart because Mike doesn't have a mom and dad or a brother and a sister or a family to rescue him from this crisis that he is in. The trauma that he's experienced in his life has put him in this situation, and he's crying out for help. But because of his, his mental illness, because of his fears, because of these things, he's, he doesn't want to receive services. So what are we supposed to do then? Just cast Mike aside? We're not supposed to do that. So for me, this is an issue of what are we willing to accept for the quality of life for other people? The people who have nobody in their families or close friends that are willing to help them. I feel like it is incumbent on us as policymakers to say, you can't live on the street. It's unsafe for you as an individual. It is unsafe for the public. It is undignified for you as an individual. And it is perpetuating a cycle of despair and poverty and fear and crisis and trauma in your life. And so what we're saying is we are not going to let you put yourself in danger, we're not going to let you put the public in danger. And for me, it is unconscionable to do nothing. If we drive by folks and we see them living in the woods and we just go, man, that looks terrible, we're not doing enough. It's our responsibility to say no. You deserve better than that. So I'm gonna, and I have tremendous respect for everybody, whether you agree with my position or not. So I, I'm interested to hear the discussion amongst my colleagues. I'm going to make a motion for option one and option two. And if it's the will of this board to wait or whatever, tremendously respectful of that. But I will just reiterate, it is, in my opinion, unconscionable to do nothing, to do nothing, to let people live in abject danger and fear, let their mental illness and their substance addictions put them on the streets in a condition that we would ourselves not allow anybody we really loved to live in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Option number one and two has been moved by Commissioner Welch there second. Motion dies for lack of a second. I'll go to Commissioner Dozier, followed by Commissioner Jackson. Mr. Dozier, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess I want to acknowledge first, um, I appreciate you stepping up, Commissioner Welch, to share your perspective. You're right. Lots of issues, we don't always agree. And, um, I suppose I can say I've been the lone person speaking out against things often, and it's not easy to share that perspective. So, um, I don't want to seem like I'm piling on your comments, but, um, I'm going to use them as some reference points, and I hope you understand this is just part of the discussion. I expressed my concerns about this ordinance in December. I, I think our work with the Sheriff's Department, um, in addition to the increased work and funding we've had with, in collaboration with Big Ben Community, um, Continuum of Care, with our partner, C E S C, um, homeless coalition throughout the community, there are numerous, numbers of them, in the last year, in the last few years, has been significant. And we have not yet seen the results of that investment, of that work. We're starting to, for sure, but we've also been through, um, a pandemic for the last two years. And for our providers and for the population that is experiencing homelessness particularly, they have been very hard hit. Um, it's been a challenge, we all know that. So we have seen something different in the last couple of years, perhaps, um, but I also think it's been an opportunity to focus on our collaboration and to step up our engagement and look for those bold goals. What Commissioner Welch is referencing is one of our strategic planning items, to, um, provide more housing, 100 new beds in the next five years. Um, that is significant, and that won't be standalone, that will be in partnership with the city, um, and with many others. So I think it is appropriate to focus on those actions we've already taken, to look for new creative ways to help folks who are experiencing homelessness. And also, and I think this is where some of your comments, Commissioner Welch, and things we've heard throughout, um, the last year and beyond, um, the concerns from some folks in the community, residents, um, and businesses that do have challenges, um, at times with people camping, with people coming on their property, other things like that. Um, there are challenges there, and I think we, we need to work with those folks, we need to help address some of those concerns, um, and certainly, and most critically, need to help people find stable, secure places where they can start to live their lives with a roof over their heads. And, um, sometimes that requires a lot of support. Permanent supportive housing is critical, and we need more of that. So to the ordinance specifically, um, although I believe county attorney, county administration has been very careful, it does not, in the legal terms, criminalize homelessness. I agree with that. The perception, though, is that we're moving in that direction. And I truly believe this ordinance is more about perception than really making an impact. And the reason why I'm saying that is I hear from constituents about panhandling sometimes. I don't think I've ever seen an image of someone in a median. It's always on the sidewalk on the side of the road. Well, the ordinance only covers the median, it doesn't cover the sidewalk. If these folks who've texted me or emailed me in the past hear about an ordinance that addresses panhandling, they may think, oh, wow, Sheriff's Department, T P D, they have a way to address this. Well, they don't. It's just about the median. We can't regulate on the sidewalk. So we're making a promise, a commitment, and I think that presents more challenges and conflicts with people who want us to take some action in the future. Um, but the camping, I think this flows through all three areas of the ordinance, but the camping is really the most extreme to me. Um, and Commissioner Welch, this is kind of teed the soap when I said I was going to reference some of your comments, um, perpetuating this lifestyle and, you know, just some, some of the things you were saying, from my perspective, asking someone who doesn't have a home, who is in need of other services to pay a $15 fine, a $50 fine, or face a $500 fine and time in the detention center, that is perpetuating these problems. I mean, so many people get in this cycle with too many fines and they build it up, and it costs something for all of us when we put more folks in the detention center. And as we've heard from the sheriff time and again, um, he is housing a lot of folks that really could use some support and may not be in this law enforcement kind of, you know, the cycle here if we had other resource. And that, and that's why he's focused on connecting and reentry programs and everything else, and I support those efforts. So I, I actually think, from my perspective, this ordinance not only doesn't do what people, some people are asking us to do to address, um, panhandling and other issues in the community, it won't have that return. It will have a perception that we can do more than we actually can, or a perception that we're criminalizing homelessness when we're not. That's just, neither one of those do we need. And then if someone gets caught in one of those fines, that is an added burden for a person who's experiencing homelessness that they simply don't need. So for those reasons, um, and I do want to thank the folks who showed up today and all those who, um, have emailed us. We've heard a lot of feedback on this particular issue. Um, so I, I would like to make a motion to accept this as a report and take no further action at this time.
Commissioner Dozier, um, I'll, I'll recognize that motion, but I would ask that you include item number one. Uh, I believe our county attorney, I said last minute that we needed that piece, but I'll, I'll accept that motion if you can include it, item number one.
Forgive me, yes. Uh, the option one is unrelated to the new ordinance. It's repealing a piece that was not, um, yeah, that we needed to repeal from existing. Okay. So, um, option one, and in regards to the new ordinance, take no further action, accept this as a report. That would be my motion, sir.
I, I'll second that motion. Commissioner Dozier, um, knowing your thoroughness in this and, and kind of dealing with you for about a minute now, um, do you want to build into that motion any kind of review in a certain time period, or are you, are you cool as is?
Um, well, thank you for the second, and I will direct this to the county administrator, if you don't mind. I assume we will hear a report back from the Sheriff's Department about the new host deputy program, and we will certainly have reports back, um, and ongoing discussions with our human service providers and B B C O C. And in that context, if we need to take additional action, we can. I don't know if we need to have another time for this ordinance to come back.
When you're answering that question, Mr. Administrator, will you let us know when we're going to have those reviews come back?
Yeah, I think everything that Commissioner Dozier said is accurate. However, it would benefit us tremendously if the board wishes to see this, which I think is what the sheriff is asking for, after a six-month period of time, for us to bring this back and report back. And specifically or not, you provide us the direction, whether at that point in time you wish to reconsider the ordinance that is written and proposed or not. If you don't, you don't, and you can give us that direction, but if you do, you do, and we'd like to get that clarification.
Mr. Dozier?
Mr. Vice Chair, I would be willing to ask for a six-month report from the sheriff on the host deputies. I will never be willing to support this ordinance. So, um, in my motion, I could say we could have a six-month report. We're all aware of what our options may be, including this, and if anyone would like to bring it up at that time, we can, or talk to the sheriff about it. But I can't include, I, I don't personally want to see this ordinance come back in six months.
Commissioner Dozier, your second agrees wholeheartedly on that. So, uh, we'll move in that direction. The motion on the floor is for item number one.
Mr. Vice Chair, on point?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I, when I spoke with the sheriff today, uh, he had, he had asked, uh, six months from the time that the two deputies are hired, which does not make that a time certain, it, it adds time to that. I don't know if we want to continue to have a, a status report coming back in six months precisely, or give some leeway for the sheriff to hire those two deputies and then have six months with them in operation. Just want to point that out, was the sheriff asked for.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Minor, thank you very much. Um, home quarantining and still on top of it. Um, we appreciate it, sir. Um, yes, six months, at the sheriff's, um, suggestion and working with our staff at the appropriate time for that six-month review to come back. I'll frame it like that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, you got the motion as Commissioner Dozier's ready? Thank you. All right, everybody understand the motion on the floor. I still have speakers. I just want to make sure everybody understand the motion. All right, I have Commissioner Jackson, followed by Commissioner Minor, finishing off with our chair. Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, um, first off, I can sincerely appreciate, um, both of your, um, feelings about this. And in particular, uh, the problem seems to, or many of the problems seem to originate around the Kearney Center. Um, and there's a real mix of people, um, in that community. There are college students, there are longtime property owners, uh, that are renting college students. There is, um, the Kearney Center, Leon County Detention Center. Um, we have a facility for battered women as well along that Pensacola Street corridor. So while I can understand, uh, both of the, uh, both of your sides, I don't, I want to, I want to at least reiterate what Commissioner Dozier said. I don't believe that we are criminalizing homelessness. I do believe that it is, as a, as Commissioner Welch said, I do believe that there are behaviors that are expected from all of us in public, and that soliciting inside of traffic while traffic flow is going, um, urinating and defecating in public, and sleeping in, um, non-specificized camping areas are not criminal, um, type offenses, but they certainly present a danger to the safety of all of us. Most of the encampments are located really close to the road. And by that, I mean, uh, if you'll visit our West Tennessee Street, um, intersection where Capital Circle comes across and notice the, uh, Walmart there, I received numerous calls from the new T-Mobile, um, folks that wanted to build a store on, in West Tallahassee. We don't get a whole lot of, uh, stuff out that way, so I was excited to hear about it. Halfway through the construction, they were dealing with, uh, significant issues related to, um, the homeless, uh, sleeping. the homeless sleeping in their building or on the sidewalks of the building, as well as some criminal acts that were occurring that weren't related to simple behaviors. I believe that if we've got $491,000 invested at this time, that we deserve to see a return on that pretty quickly. That's the price tag for the two, I think they call them host deputies. And correct me if I'm wrong, I thought at the December 14 meeting, were they going to hire new folks or reassign someone? Because they talked about them enforcing and being an outreach for the remainder of 2022 and then continuing that effort on in 2023. So we don't know what the current status is as far as whether they've been hired or not.
They're working on it diligently. They may be going from in-house. We're just not sure if they're going to be able to do that, but their sheriff's office is focused. They're moving ahead.
Man, I say that a half a million dollars is worth us reviewing it and seeing the results. I believe there has to be a hard measurement or some sort of benchmark. I don't believe arrest is going to be something that we're going to count up. I was reading about Sarasota, and they had over 1,000 encounters, but had only four arrests, and those were on outstanding warrants unrelated to public camping. I do believe the public camping, there's a, suffice it to say, take a ride out West Pensacola Street, when instead of turning into Ocala Road and heading up to Publix, come on down West Pensacola Street, and you'll see some of the dangers. Driving at night, there's no regard for road rules. We've had seven pedestrian versus vehicle accidents between Highway 90 West and Pensacola Street and Jackson Bluff Road over the last year and a half. That's safety, and it's not only safety of the folks that are camping, it's also the safety of people that are driving and not expecting someone to dash out in front of them in the middle of the night. I do believe the sheriff deserves a chance to provide hard feedback on what has been done and what has been accomplished, and that I'm more than willing in six months to continue the conversation about ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I have Commissioner Minor, and we're going to end up with our chairman. Commissioner Minor, you have the floor.
Vice Chair Maddox, I'd like to be on the.
Tell you what, I'm going to go Commissioner Minor, then I'm going to go Commissioner Cummings, and then I'm going to come to our chair. Commissioner Minor, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You know, just in the last year, we've provided significant investments that address the growing problem of homelessness. And just to make sure that everyone listening hears this, in the last year, $2.1 million in Leon Care's funds for homeless shelter providers, $6.3 million in ARPA funding for homelessness efforts. Last July, the city and the county jointly created a new CHSP service category for homelessness, and we allocated $3.8 million for that in the upcoming fiscal year. Last month at our county commission meeting, we funded two additional Leon County sheriff deputies, as we talked about at length here, for the street outreach team to work with. And even just last night, we talked about the county commission with a new bold goal of reducing the number of chronic homelessness by half. So never before have we allocated more resources toward reducing homelessness. And I don't want the media, I don't want anyone watching this meeting to think that we're not going to be doing something if we don't pass this ordinance. We're doing a tremendous amount of work, investing in a tremendous commitment to making real change in reducing the number of homelessness people in this community by helping them find stable housing and/or them getting the assistance that they need. We need to reduce, we need to increase the access to affordable housing, transitional housing, mental health programs, and other services that will help get them the assistance that they need and the stable housing that they need. Now, the sheriff, as you know, has asked us to give us time to let these investments work. Big Ben Continuum of Care has also asked us for some time to help with these incredible investments we've made, so they can implement these and make real change. So I'm supporting the motion on the floor. I think it's the right move to take at this time. By supporting this request, we, and by me, but by we, I mean, I myself, you know, the city, the county, the sheriff's office, the whole community, we need to work together to make real results. We can't just throw money at this and expect the problem to be solved. We've got to really work together with the Big Ben Continuum of Care, with the sheriff's office, with TPD, with our partners within the continuum of care to make real change. But I think this motion is a good one. I think the sheriff's request is a reasonable request, and I'm looking forward to supporting this motion and moving on.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner, sorry, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, Commissioner Dozier has something quick to add. I don't want to end with you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just want to weigh in on this particular issue, and I think clearly we have an issue with the homeless population of epidemic proportions as it relates to their health and safety, welfare, as it also relates to the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens in Leon County. And it's been my observation over the last 20 years or so in dealing with the homeless up close and personal in the Frenchtown area, that the majority of the people that are homeless don't want to be homeless. They don't relish living on the street. It's been my experience. I've had homeless individuals come back to my office excited that they had gotten there. Social Security disability started, or whatever pension benefits started, and their sentiment is, you know, now I can find me a place to stay. Now I can try to assist my family. The majority of the individuals, I believe, are crying out for help, and I believe it's our responsibility to assist them. I think the county attorney did a great job on the ordinance, and if what I hear at some point, depending on the report we get from the sheriff, I believe at some point an ordinance will come back to us. It might need modification, editing, but I believe at some point we are going to have to, as a public body, we're going to have to step up to the plate and be more proactive as far as protecting the citizen and protecting the homeless individuals as well. I know in our meeting yesterday, when we listed our goals and objectives, one of the goals, and I believe that Washington mentioned this, is to reduce our homeless population by 50%, over the next five years. And I think that's a bold goal, and I believe that we can accomplish it. If at some point we look specifically at this ordinance, I don't believe it criminalizes homelessness. It might have the perception, commissioners, but if you look at the specific language, it's permissive language. Most of the language says may, not shall, except in the instances where we're looking at public defecation and public urination. But in other instances, I believe it demonstrates that county administration wants to provide services to this segment of the population, not one time, but two times, but three times before there is any citation issue. So I believe what we have to do is be serious about helping this segment of the population. And if it means giving the sheriff an opportunity to demonstrate that he and his officers can address this situation, and I don't have a problem in allowing him to do that, but I believe at some point, Madam County Attorney, that we will be faced again with this ordinance or something similar. And I'm not sure what we can do as far as the language is concerned, so that we can move it from the level where it's not perceived as criminalizing the homeless. What we're doing is looking at the behavior, not the status of the individual. And I think if we look at that, look at it from that standpoint, as county commissioners, I think we will know that we are trying to protect not only the homeless, but we're trying to protect the public. And of course, health, safety is the primary concern. The only thing I had as far as that ordinance specifically is concerned, Madam County Attorney, it does seem to be one provision, 12.145A. The first clause, I just think I would recommend a modification if we are talking about looking at this ordinance somewhere down the road if we don't agree to have public hearing on it next month. But the language, I believe, should be modified to basically say if a person is found to be in violation. In that way, it's not criminalizing their status as a homeless person. 12.145, parentheses, A, that first clause. And I wouldn't recommend that if it said "and," but it's got "or" between those two phrases. So I just recommend that change, Madam County Attorney. And then bottom line, Mr. Vice Chair, I am not totally against allowing the sheriff an opportunity to capitalize upon the funds that we've agreed to provide to him for two officers to be designated in the specific area of dealing with the homeless population.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Dozier, we're going to end up with our chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Forgive me, I just, I think this is good for the record. I'm guessing most of us have talked with the sheriff in the last few weeks. There are tools in their toolkit for law enforcement, whether it's TPD or the Sheriff's Department, to address issues, even without this ordinance. Sheriff made that clear. And if there is a business that is having issues, I mean, I encourage them to call. It's not like we are not doing anything or can't do anything. I know there is a distinction here between the actions and the status, but this item really addresses actions that, I mean, it is focused on those who are living without a home. I mean, that is it. So that's just kind of how it's been framed, that's how it's intended to use, that's how we've got to take it. So I think it is important to say, this is not doing nothing. We have done a lot, as others have mentioned, and our law enforcement partners have a lot of tools in their toolkit, as do our street outreach teams and our providers. The other thing that, and this may not be necessary to mention, but, and forgive me, Madam County Attorney made a little fun the other day with it, there are delicate subjects here that we don't necessarily talk about in public meetings that often. But I do think that some of these issues that come up, like urination, defecation, I'm going to focus on the urination, it's not just a homeless question. I mean, let's just be blunt, post-football games, for the men out there, I mean, enough said, this is not just about homeless, right? There's a lot of other issues for those experiencing homelessness. And Mr. Vice Chair, that, I mean, really, I wanted to talk about the other tools in toolkit, but that piece of it, I mean, I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable with focusing only on folks experiencing homelessness because, and Commissioner Jackson, I think, I mean, I was hearing some of this, this brought to mind when you were talking about pedestrians and, I mean, we have a lot of issues and they overlap. Yes, they impact those experienced homeless, they also impact or are caused by others who have a home. So I think we need to be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. We'll end it out with our chair. Mr. Chair, you have a big one.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to pass the gavel on this very important issue. We're located in Leon County Courthouse, which houses courts for the Second Judicial Circuit, as well as for the county system of Leon Court System. We're in the midst of it, and our county government interfaces on a daily, bases with the court, the judges, the court administrator, the sheriff, and other component parts of criminal justice. Wanda Hunter, our Assistant County Administrator, for a few seasons operated as our, I believe, Director of Probation, and interface, interacted extensively with the jail, the courts, the court administration, so many facets. Teresa Broxton, who staffs and serves as our staff director, the PSEC, those units of the sheriff, the police, the court, the state attorney, the public, a whole lot of elements of criminal justice, family, if you will. And I have asked them for data, which bottlenecked to the Public Safety Council last week. We had the public defender sitting where our county attorney is sitting tonight, Ms. Olsteen, and we had the state attorney representing Ms. Campbell sitting in Commissioner Minor's seat last week. And last week was perhaps as tense a meeting as I've experienced before because our numbers have swollen and there's a bottlenecking. And I think that as we think what the sheriff was telling us, to put on our economic lens as to what the cost, the convenience, and all of those things, I want to ask, Mr. Vice Chair, if Wanda and/or Teresa, whoever's comfortable, would come and share some of the data that we were instructed by last week, and some of the things that is causing tension as we are trying to mitigate against overcrowding in our jail. Ms. Hunter, if you would come, Teresa.
Thank you, Wanda. Appreciate you doing this.
Wanda Hunter is our, for the benefit of the public, is our Assistant County Administrator.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As I shared with you yesterday, your jail numbers are relatively stagnant. Your current population in the Leon County facility is 1,175 inmates. Your capacity is 1,200. You have 30 inmates who are currently housed in other jails, Ocala County and Jefferson County. The sheriff is currently in discussions with Walton County about taking some of the inmates, should there be more added to the facility, should more people be arrested. At this juncture, the average daily stay for inmates is 262 days. This includes pre-sentence defendants as well. At a cost of $96 a day, your average cost for an inmate is $25,000. Those are your basic statistics.
These are the numbers that we're looking at. And to mitigate against numbers where the sheriff is leasing space from Walcoala and Jefferson and is negotiating rental space from Walton County, that we're paying $96, and I say we, we're the taxpayers of Leon County, $96 a night for an average stay of $262. So for somebody who urinated on the sidewalk, a function executed by most well people, the location is the problem here. 262 days could be the stay for urinating. And that one urination, if arrested for that, would equate to 25,000. And that one urination, if arrested for that, would equate to $25,000. And when we do a cost-benefit analysis of what we're punishing, is it really that serious to citizens of Leon County, $25,000 because somebody went there on the sidewalk or what have you?
Point, point of information, Chairman, the draft ordinance provides for a $50 fine for a urination or defecation public pace. There would be no instance where someone would be arrested for that offense based on this draft ordinance. There are some state statutes where someone could be arrested as a criminal offense for that violation, but that's not what this draft ordinance does.
Okay, is there, is there? I'm sorry, is there anywhere in the draft ordinance where it gets to that point or at least?
Camping or sleeping is the only portion of this ordinance where someone could actually be arrested or serve jail time.
Thank you.
That's it.
Did I, thank you. Did I not read that there's a cumulative effect and measure that on a repeated basis, a person could be up to six months? Did I see six months? And, and did I read that in ordinance? I thought I saw that they could be housed in jail for six months, up to six months, or $500 fine.
That's under the camping or sleeping provision, which is in Division Three, and you're looking at the Section 12 dash one four five enforcement's penalties.
Okay, I'm willing to switch arguments because we likely have more people camping than we actually have urinating. We probably have a greater potential to arrest folk for camping. That's, that's even simpler, lower hanging fruit. Wanda, you want, come back. So, so, come back. You want to add anything else? And so what I wanted to ask is that at 262 days per average, what do those numbers look like? Because if we get someone, six months is, um...
Commissioner Proctor, I did the quick math. I was so shocked by it, I had to go down there and ask Wanda about it. At 252 days, at $25,000 a day per inmate, we're talking about thirty, thirty point one five million dollars.
Yeah. That's, that's what I was trying to get to, Wanda. He, he hit it on.
Yes.
You know, running backs have about zero point one, zero point two, and by the time you say two, zero point three, they have to cut.
Right.
Quarterbacks get all the way to zero point four and they have to release, but he, he always thinks much faster on these things. Thank you. We're talking about a $30 million proposition here. And to allow this to go on the books with the cumulative effect, and people who are out there in the woods, I mean, we could just think of the places without naming them. This is serious business. And the fact that we are already housing people arrested in Leon County in neighboring jails and negotiating for a third site, and soon thereafter, if we put this in effect for a fourth or fifth site, this can be very, very expensive business. So the sheriff has asked, commissioners, in your posture with respect to our hitting the brakes a little bit, and there is an economic factor, and I think that Commissioner Dozier has said very, spoken very well to the good fortune that we have a sheriff who understands the difference between social work and criminal justice work. And it seems largely that he perceives that a jail, for one, ought not be the first base that poor people can find mental health treatment. Unfortunately, our jail in Leon County is a first base that many people can access and get treatment. That's unfortunate, but it's true. And there are other social dynamics for which the sheriff is cognitive of, and I'm hopeful that in a few months that he can share with us. Now, the other dynamic that I wanted to put on the table, commissioners, because you need to know, but you sent me to that meeting, and that is the fact of, and Wanda, can you share with our commissioners about the plea offers and the exceptional slow pace at which people are getting out of jail with plea offers from the state presented to detainees?
Yes, sir. According to the state attorney, of all of the pre-sentence inmates, this includes out of custody, he wasn't able to break it down by in custody and out of custody, there eighty-two percent have plea offers on the table. Of just the misdemeanor defendants, both in custody and out of custody, seventy-six percent have plea offers on the table.
The eighty-two percent is for who? Everybody?
Yes.
Okay, and the seventy, and the seventy-six percent is for?
For misdemeanors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Wanda. So that right there, Commissioner Cummings, is where the rubber meets the road. We have a public defender who is simply not executing with the speed with which is warranted and deserved, and I could not vote for this, recognizing that we have a state attorney that has eighty-two percent offers of pleas to our inmates. And still, she indicated, speaking right there from Ms. Olsteen's seat last week, that ninety percent of the folk didn't want them, or that those offers were not reasonable. The question is, have those offers been made, disclosed to the detainees? And it's so hard for me to believe that ninety percent of people who are in jail, they don't care what the terms is if you let me out. I'll say, yeah. I couldn't accept that. And we have a stagnated system where at the low point of COVID, at the high point of COVID, our numbers had gone down to 800. The courts are participating, the state is participating, and I'm telling y'all, our public defender ain't executing and getting the offers to the detainees, and it ain't going fast enough because of foot dragging there. So I don't want to see other people arrested, and we are buying space from other counties at, at ninety-six dollars a night, $25,000, because that's how slow the public process is. And until we can get serious in the public defender's office, I can't get serious about this because it's going to end up being very unjust. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe you know which way I'm going.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for item one and taking no further action with a review in six months. A motion is made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by myself, and that's six months from the hiring of the two officers, correct, uh, two deputies, correct?
Yes, sir. We left it at the discretion of the sheriff and the staff to bring back the six-month mark. Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed to the motion? Seeing none, we call it approved unanimously, seven zero. Commissioners, before handing it back over to the chair, I think, first of all, I think we can push through, if you guys don't mind, but the, the, I'm, I'm staggered by these jail numbers. Thirty million dollars, eighty-four percent, eighty-two percent offered plea, that's 984 people, eighty-five people that, that if they accepted a plea, wouldn't be in jail. That's total overall, twelve, we, we, we're bursting at the seams, twelve oh one? We don't even have room for people anymore. I don't, I don't, Mr. Administrator, I'm always careful to stay in my lane when it comes to these types of things, but if there's anything that we can do, Commissioner Proctor, thank you for bringing it to us, if there's anything that we can do from our standpoint, I would love to know in the form of maybe even us having a workshop, looking at the population, a presentation by the PSC, or by Wanda, or, or even hearing from the state attorney, I, I just, thirty million dollars is a lot of money. That's a lot of money, and twelve hundred is a lot of people, I mean. So just a quick, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to exacerbate the point, but just a quick discussion about what the board thinks, we need agenda item workshop, and then we go from there to continue the agenda, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Administrator, I'm going to Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Maddox, I wasn't sure if you were looking for a response for that, that there's, there's not much, if anything, that, that we can do related to the disposition of the legal cases that are being, that are being disposed of and negotiated between the state attorney and the public defender.
Yes, sir.
But we're engaged on a daily basis with the sheriff's office. Obviously, the sheriff's office, that is a delegated responsibility in the running of the jail from the board, that is a, that is a Leon County responsibility that is dedicated to, that is delegated to the sheriff's department, and so we, no one, no one has a greater interest in jail population than, than we do.
Yes.
And so we are, again, are in daily communications, but there is very little that we can do. The, as Commissioner Proctor well knows, we are dealing with some, what I would call transitory issues related to COVID and the disposition of court cases, as well as some of the negotiation issues that are, that are, that are taking place, which we hope, and we're working very hard along with the sheriff's department and the judicial officers to resolve.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I think for me personally, I think what I'm more interested in, because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested at all in getting into the district attorney and the state attorney's business as far as how they negotiate, but more looking at the breakdown of our jail population and, and how it's working as far as our violent criminals versus non-violent offenders, how long they're, how long they've been there and things of that nature. So I may, that may even be a report, but I want to hear from our commissioners to see how you want to handle this. Maybe it's a report coming back, looking at that, or, or, or something of that nature. So Commissioner Dozier, any other commissioner want to speak?
Before, before going there, the county administrator just shared that we do have a jail population workshop.
Final report, which goes right to your, final, the final point, which goes right to your comments, Commissioner Maddox, was that we've got a workshop scheduled for March already on jail population.
Great, so the workshop is already scheduled?
Yep.
Awesome, awesome. That answers my question. Commissioner Dozier, still want to speak?
No, sir. You all have covered it. I remembered the workshop in March, and I guess the only other thing I would say is we actually have two workshops that day. We, we do, Mr. County Administrator, have a decent amount of time for the workshop on jail population. It comes up to a comp plan workshop at 1:30. We start in the morning. So I'm always sensitive, I mean, loading up these workshops and not having enough time to really work through the, to the discussion, but I, I was just going to suggest, Mr. Chair, if there was any other direction we needed to give the county administrator for information coming back for that workshop, we could use this opportunity, but it sounds like we've already got it covered. So I think that's the day to dig in.
Thank you. On point, Mr. Administrator, that, that workshop that we're talking about, what, what are we going to do specifically on, in that workshop?
The, the issues of jail population are, they're, they're always the same. We manage them every day. There are strategies, there are, there are alternatives, there are programs in place. You will get a full account of everything we're doing, everything that's possible for us to do, and our ongoing jail population management, which, again, a jail population must be managed actively, and we've got every...
All right. Item number twenty, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty is a report on, from the library, on the, the Library of Things. Commissioners, I will, I will make this very quick in terms of a summary. As you all know, this is another step in our implementation, our Essential Libraries Initiative. You all, I know, have a lot of information and received a lot of information on this already. We were prepared to give a presentation, we don't have to do that, happy to answer any questions, and with that, we're recommending options one, two, and three.
Is there a motion?
There's options one, two, three.
And there are no speakers on the side.
Motion been made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Welsh. Have Commissioner Dozier queue.
I shared this in briefing, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. Just wanted to mention it here, I have started talking about the Library of Things in the last couple of weeks, and it is incredible, and people are as excited about this as they are about the seed library, and that's not an under, I mean, they're, they're really excited about the seed library. This is just a fantastic move, and I really hope people take advantage and look at what might be offered from the Library of Things. So I want to appreciate our new library director and all of our staff for taking on yet another challenge, but we're really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Any comment from those who are participating virtually? Seeing none, any objection to the motion on the floor? Show it as passed unanimously. We're going now to item number twenty-one, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty-one, Commissioner seeks your authorization to proceed with the development of an ordinance creating a process for the application review of golf cart operations on county roads. Commissioners, we have no speakers on this item, and we're recommending option one.
Option one is recommended, there are motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for staff recommendation.
Staff recommendations made by Commissioner Dozier, they're seconded, seconded by Commissioner Welsh. Commissioner Dozier, on the floor.
I just wanted, for the record, to mention one comment that I had asked the county attorney about. The process kind of speaks to having a majority of your residents within a neighborhood put in this application. I asked about a developer for a new property that may want to put an application, they're counted as a single property owner in that respect, and the process doesn't need to be any different. Is that correct? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we covered both bases and, as I said, mention it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I will be voting for the ordinance, just wanted to declare that before we got to that point, simply because I think it requires, if I read the item correctly, it requires anyone that operates a golf cart on a county road to go through the process. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you have?
Yeah, I'll be voting against it, sir.
Do you have to have a driver's license test to operate a golf cart?
I don't know about that, but I, I don't think that this is something that I can support.
Thank you. Any other comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Me.
Motion carries six one, Commissioner Jackson dissent. We'll move now to item number twenty-two, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number twenty-two seeks full board appointments for the Career Source Board, as well as the Joint City-County Bicycle Work Group. Options one and two reflect the eligible applicants for each, Mr. Chairman.
All right, looks like we only have one applicant for each. Is there a motion for options number one and two?
Some.
Staff recommendations moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by our chair. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries objection. Thank you, commissioners, for having, letting me get through that. It's 5:27. Rather than go ahead and speak, I want to give us thirty minutes to get a little break, so we'll go ahead and recess right now. Everybody be back here in, in here at six o'clock. We are in recess. Thank you.